Call this meeting to order and stand for a pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. And to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Nice looking at everybody's belt buckles. Roll call, Mr. Brennan.
Honorable Mayor Ron Shaver.
Present.
Councilmember Brian Erdy Alice.
Here.
Doug Shasso.
Here.
Allison Howe.
Here.
Lynn Anderson.
Here.
Lynn Deal.
Present.
Kevin Lindell.
Present.
Hey, first item on our agenda is approval of the minutes from our May 19th, 2020 council regular meeting. Mr. Brennan?
Thank you, Your Honor. A draft copy of the May 19th minutes was provided in your meeting packet and is presented for your approval by resolution.
Has everybody reviewed them? They were in your package and are there any questions or comments?
They look good.
Seeing none, I would entertain a resolution.
Your Honor, I have a resolution to approve the minutes from the May 19th regular city council meeting.
Second.
I have a resolution by Allison Howe, second by Kevin Lindell. Hope my roll call.
Aye.
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 All opposed, same sign.
That resolution carries unanimously.
Next is a presentation on first reading of an ordinance amending the 2019 budget and request to schedule a public hearing on the ordinance for June 16th. Ms. Kenny.
Good evening, Mayor and Council, and our esteemed guests from ACM. We have an ordinance here before you that is only changing one item on the the original ordinance that set the budget for the year of 2019. So back in October of 2019, we would have run this budget through and it has turned out that we need another 2.6 million in the budget in order for the budget not to violate anything. So the the 2.6 million is made up, you know, primary, you could say the one thing in it is the, is the center point that we went over on that. But an easier way to understand it is that there were many things in the capital improvement budget that we ended up coming back to console and getting approval for more. But when we do that, we don't change the line item in the budget. We wait until the end of the year because there's also a lot of items that are the other way. We didn't spend near as much. And so we feel our way is that we don't want to inflate the budget for every single time we have a budget overage. So we wait until the, the audit is, is just about done and decide how much we're going to transfer so that we won't violate any, any laws about the budget. So I'm just asking for, for you to approve. Well, you don't have to approve it, but just to request, I'm requesting a public hearing on the ordinance for, for the next time we, we meet in two weeks.
So we don't have to approve it?
I don't know. Ask John.
Yeah, you, you need to approve first reading.
Okay, you need to approve the first reading.
That's what I thought.
Yeah, it, it doesn't actually, it just says, yeah. So we need approval of this 2.6 million that we're going to add to the category of capital improvement so that we don't go over.
So was all this 2.6 million part of the capital improvement? Or was it other line items throughout the budget?
It was all capital improvement. And there were other items on the capital improvement like the Gene Doty Center. We had that. That was not in the actual budget. The fire department rescue truck wasn't in there because we save each year for it. The zipper machine that the streets bought and the mastic mixer machine, those were things that we came to you and you said, and the, the consul said, yeah, I think that's something that would make sense and we need to get. And, you know, that's just talking about the ones that went over, but there's a lot of items that went under. And so the total amount, even though just center point went over 2.6 million. We only need that amount because of the other things offsetting each other.
So Jeannie, quick question. So this this ordinance is just, like, the biggest reason is just it saves time on staff and it saves time during the audit. So it's pretty much a traditional annual thing during the audit process?
I think it saves time during the year changing each budget line item. And it also keeps us from inflating the budget. Because we did it on every single one we went over and did no adjustment to any of those that went under. We'd be, you know, we already have, what, a 77 million dollar budget? I don't know, in this, no, 65 million dollar budget is what we had. So I mean, it's just, it's kind of just the way we've done it. We started it after ACM came. I think in the past they might have done budget adjustments earlier. But they've been here for 10 years about.
Thanks.
So this 2.6 million that you need is all because of stuff that's happened since January 1, 2020?
No. These are things that happen. See, we're here to do the audit. And so during the year of 2019, if we were to just li- leave the numbers as they are, our audit would show that we had a budget overage. And there is some sort of a prob-, you know, that there's a problem if that happens. And so rather than changing, each time we came to console last year and said, hey, have some more money for this. We don't adjust every line as, as they say yes. So at the end of the year, we see in this whole fund, what do we need? Not just on a particular line item. So, so it doesn't really have anything to do actually with 2020. It's just something, you know, we're still living in the past. That's what accountants do. And we're about 2019 and trying to make it right.
It's just balances our
Much done every year.
I just, I remember in December, they came back in for like 300,000 on center point. I never did figure that one out, but.
That would have been part of this because it came out of the capital improvement budget.
You said 2.6 was towards center point? Like, what was the biggest thing? Whether it was the little things that added up to 2.6?
I'm sorry, but I don't have what each of the things were. I just have 4.1 million is what we spent. 1.5 million is what we budgeted. So that, that goes over 2.6. I can get that information for you as to what were the items that made up the center point essentially bill for the year.
That would be helpful.
That would be great by the next meeting.
Yeah, we can have that because this isn't really completely official until next meeting anyway. So.
And Brian, I think since it was such an enormous capital project with roads and like water pipes and things like that, I think yeah, it's, it's a pretty big sticker shock, but I think a lot of it was roads and things like that. So.
I remember, right? I think that one of the biggest things was the decision to go ahead and extend like Saunders all the way over to railroad and everything since we had the crews here and everything. And even though it ended up costing us more money, it was saving us money because it wouldn't have to pay transportation fees for them to come back in and do that this year when we would have been able to put it into the budget.
That's, Kevin's correct on that. That was the largest part of it.
Yep, alright. Jeannie, well, you can get us a, the breakdown for the, the public hearing meeting and we'll go.
No problem.
Okay. So, any other questions?
Done for me.
I would entertain a resolution.
Your Honor, I have a resolution to, on the first reading of an ordinance that will amend the 2019 budget and request a scheduled public hearing on June 16th.
Second.
I have a resolution by Allison Howe and a second by Kevin Lindell. Hope my roll call. Aye.
Aye.
All in. Opposed, same sign.
That resolution carries unanimously.
Next is a presentation of the draft 2019 financial audit. Ms. Kenny.
Okay, a lot of people worked pretty hard on making sure that we have a good audit. And so I just wanted to take a couple minutes. Mention them. Some of them are watching tonight. They're watching the Hollywood Squares or whatever this is. I, I want to thank all the city staff who helped to achieve another great audit. Doug Hoffman is like a one man inventory show and he satisfied the auditors' questions early on because they have to in December. Connie, the general accountant, Katie in payroll, Monique in accounts payable, and Kendra in utility billing provided auditing answers and information the comfort of their homes. Believe me, it is easier to provide answers from the office and that's why Chris and I hung out there. I have to especially thank Connie this year because she took over the fixed assets that I usually do. And this was a year when we had a whole bunch of fixed assets and she did a really good job. But, you know, the real hero this year is Nelson for setting everything up so that all of us could work at home. Without Nelson, we would likely not even had an audit. Not that that would be a bad thing, but we wouldn't have. We had a really good team of auditors this year. Aaron has worked with the city for four years. He also works for the auditing firm. Randy's a partner. Also working with us were Tyra, Ashley, Michael, Trevor, and Abby. I hope I have all their names. The audit went good mostly because we had a great team in finance and auditors who work with us. And also because of good luck.
Okay, so this is just the draft we'll be reviewing and.
Right now, Randy's going to go through it with you and hopefully in the next couple of weeks, you'll have an opportunity to look at any, you know, bigger questions that you might have that we could get answered. But he's just going to kind of go through it like the auditors always do, just kind of on a top level basis. And Aaron is here also.
Am I up?
You're up.
Okay. I assume it's okay to screen share. It looks like I've got the option.
Yeah, if you, if you wish.
Are you able to see what I'm presenting at the moment?
Portions of it.
Yeah, it's a, it's not the whole document. It's, it's enlarged.
You, you could see it. When you first put it on there, I could see it, but then it got too big.
It got too big.
Yeah, Randy, you're zoomed in. You're zoomed in too close. Yeah, I'm trying to reduce in the percentage.
Better?
Oh, yeah.
Okay. Alright, well, I would echo everything that Jeannie said. It's, it's, you know, it's, it's what the, it, without the effort, the extensive effort of the team at Fort Morgan, this would not have been possible. As you can imagine, an audit's not an easy thing to get through in the first place and to have to do a lot of it virtually. Because a lot of us went to work from home about the middle of, of March. So this has been a particularly challenging audit. So I do want to acknowledge everyone's effort and thank everyone for working hard to help us get through this, to, to be in this position where we, we kind of normally are at this time as part of the audit, in the face of everything that we were dealing with is pretty amazing. So there are two documents that I'll go over with you tonight. The first is this one. It's the audit rap document. It kind of shares with you the status of the audit where we're at right now. We are virtually done. There's a, there's the QC process and the reviews of the financial statements. This, this document has not gone through that, that yet. I'm sorry, the financial statement document has not gone through the entire quality control review process. That'll happen over the next week or so. But we should be, there should be no issues whatsoever in being able to issue this thing on time. The other thing that kind of popped up, kind of mid, mid-work was the requirement to do a single auditor, an audit in accordance with the uniform guidance. What that means is every year the organ, the city gets federal dollars and if the amount expended exceeds $750,000, there's a requirement for you to do some additional test work over compliance relating to those federal programs. Having that kind of hit midstream, we had to, we had to add some folks to help us get through that. So the majority of the test work is done, but we don't have any of the reports in the document that I'll share with you tonight. So those are the kind of the two final steps for us to get through the audit is is getting the, the financial statements through the final quality control review internally and then also completing and reporting on the single audit procedures. I'll pause occasionally to see if there are any questions, but feel free to interrupt if, if you have a question as I'm going through this. The audit rap document, as I mentioned, is the final communication. We'll skip over the cover letter and the discussion outline. The status of our audit, we have substantially completed our audit. So I've already shared with you the areas that were, were remaining. The audit was performed in accordance with auditing standards generally accepted in the United States, along with the government auditing standards, which is part of the whole single audit process. The objective of our audit is to obtain reasonable assurance, not absolute assurance. So we don't test every single transaction that happens during the year, but we do draw samples of transactions from populations and then test those transactions and draw conclusions from that. There were some changes in, in internal control environment a little bit during the year. So we designed some additional procedures around that. Early on, we would have shared with you a document that was similar to this that just shared our planned audit approach. So after we've done our risk assessment process, we design our audit approach and then we execute on that. The only thing that really impacted or changed the way we approached the audit was the, the fact that we were having to perform things virtually. So it, it did obviously result in some changes in how we approached certain test work. We also looked closer at the, the kind of going concern evaluation. We don't have any issues. The, you'll see when we get to the financial statements, the city's in great shape. But it's going to be impacted like everyone else by the, the ultimate outcome of this pandemic. We do expect to issue an unmodified opinion. It's a, a lot of times referred to as a clean opinion. That's what you're looking for. We also expect to issue an unmodified opinion on the compliance requirements relating to the federal funds that I mentioned earlier. The long paragraph there, there's other information contained in the financial statements. Some of it we reconcile to the financial statements and in, and issue an in relation to opinion. Other pieces of it, we don't issue an opinion on, but we do read it and make sure that it's materially consistent with the financial statements. The last two bullets there, just kind of reiterate what I said at the beginning. We received, everything we asked for was provided. We received full cooperation from management as we performed the audit. I should mention here, it's at the beginning, it's, you know, the, the performance of the audit doesn't relieve those charged with governance, which in this case would be you of your responsibilities. And I, I, I think we've, we've kind of stressed this in the past, but, but the you, the, the city council is who we are reporting to. So the, the audit, we are independent of the organization, both in fact and appearance and we, we report to you our findings on the financial statements. So just making sure that everybody understands how that works. The financial statements are the, are the responsibility of management and city council, but we perform an audit on that and report back to city council. Results of our audit, fortunately, we did not have any new accounting pronouncements that became applicable this year. There, there were a few that would have become applicable, but the GASB did come out with a GASB statement number 95. Sorry. GASB stands for governmental accounting standards board. They issued a standard fairly late, but they did before we issued, issue GASB statement number 95, which deferred for a year. Several, and you'll see this at the end of this presentation, but several of the pronouncements that would have been effective for, for the organization this year. And then for 18 months, some others. So we were fortunate to avoid some, having to deal with some of that this year. There are significant estimates inherent within the financial statements. Nothing really changed from one year to the next. We do, as I mentioned already, perform a risk-based approach. So the primary areas of focus, these are the areas that we identified as having a higher risk, either because they are governed by complex accounting rules, they involve large dollars amounts or, or significant volumes of transactions. This is kind of the areas that we've primarily focused our audit efforts. We did have some adjusting journal entries. They are attached to this document. We won't go over those in detail. If you have any questions on any of them, we, we're happy to answer those. We had no uncorrected misstatements. So any errors that we identified were corrected by the organization. We assist with the preparation of the financial statements, but, and we do complete a, a disclosure checklist, just ensuring that the financial statements are adequately robust and they contain all the disclosures that are required. Internal control over financial reporting. Let me pause real quick. Are there any questions up until this point?
Me? Anybody else?
Not yet.
Alright. Internal, so internal control of financial reporting is part of the audit. We do you know, develop an understanding of the control environment for the purpose of designing our audit approach. It's kind of a risk, risk assessment process. We, we do not issue an opinion on internal control, but as we're doing that and as we perform the audit, if we identify deficiencies in internal control or the system of internal controls, then we'll categorize them into one of these three categories. Material weakness is the most significant, meaning that a control deficiency is so severe that we believe a material misstatement would be missed. A controlled, a deficiency in internal control is the lowest level. Just there should be a control here and there's not, but it could be inconsequential. And then anything in between that we think warrants your opinion, attention is a significant deficiency. We did not identify any material weaknesses. But as I mentioned, we don't look for everything. So it's possible that there are material weaknesses that we didn't identify. Sorry, other required communications. I already mentioned there was, there were really no changes to our planned audit approach outside of having to audit virtually. As part of the audit, we do make inquiries of council members and, and didn't, nothing came out of those inquiries that we think warrants your attention. There were no specialized skills required for us to be able to perform the audit. We didn't identify any relationships that haven't already been disclosed in the financial statements or that we think causes any problems. We didn't have any disagreements with management. There were no significant difficulties encountered during the audit, again, outside of having to adjust to, to auditing virtually. There's nothing else that I haven't already shared with you that I think warrants your attention. And then at the end of the audit, we get a representation letter from management that puts into writing those oral representations made throughout the audit. This next page, just, it's an affirmative statement that we are independent of the organization in fact and appearance. This is communicated in our engagement letter as well. So kind of at the beginning of the audit, we would communicate this. And then at the end of the audit, we communicated again. Here's GASB statement 95, the one I mentioned earlier, where you'll see that there are a number of statements that would have been effective soon. But fortunately, the GASB provided some relief and they are not, they are not effective for another 12 months. And then there's another couple of statements, leases primarily that are, that are not effective for 18 months. We've been provided some relief there. We have a slide on cybersecurity and these are, these should be hyperlinks that you can click through. We are a member of the BDO Alliance program and through that we have access to resources that we share with our clients. This is probably the hottest topic in, in auditing right now, just recognizing prior to COVID, there were significant risks from a cybersecurity standpoint, and those, those have only been amped up with, with everything going on that we have now. So just some resources that we provide for you to, to have available to you. And then the journal entries are the last few pages. That is the, the, the presentation of the rap document. Are there any questions on this before I move into the financial statements? Alright, in the financial statements, these were provided in advance. There's only a few pages I'll probably cover, but again, I'll answer any questions that you have. This is our audit opinion. It's our, our letterhead. It's really the only piece of the document that belongs to us. This first section describes what we're auditing, the financial statements of the, the individual opinion units within the organization. Management's responsibility is that second paragraph. Our responsibility, how we perform the audit is described in that long section here in the middle of the document. Sorry, I should have asked, is this, is this at the right resolution? Can everybody see this fairly well?
Yeah.
Okay. Our opinions are at the bottom of this page. So again, we were able to satisfy ourselves the, that the financial statements are materially accurate in accordance with generally accepted accounting principles. We did add an emphasis of a matter paragraph. So you'll see when we get, I'll point this out when we get to the footnotes. There's a footnote that you have always disclosed where you say that you've evaluated subsequent events through the issuance of the financial statements. Generally, you would disclose things like new debt or new major capital improvements or things like that. Because of the, the COVID-19 outbreak, there's a disclosure in the subsequent events footnote describing that and the significant uncertainties around that. So we've included a paragraph here. It's called an emphasis of a matter paragraph. It's not, it's not a modification to the opinion. It's just calling the reader's attention to a somewhat unique or unusual disclosure in the financial statements. I hope we never have a disclosure like this again. And so that makes it somewhat unique. And so that's, it doesn't change our opinion at all. It's really just, again, calling the reader's attention to that. Other matters, so requires supplemental information, the management's discussion analysis, which precedes the financial statements is included. There's some budgetary comparison information. The pension and OPEB disclosure schedules are all required supplemental information. We don't issue an opinion on them, but we do read them and make sure that they don't disagree with the financial statements. Then there's other budgetary information that we do reconcile to the financial statements and issue an in relation to opinion. Any questions on, on the opinion? This, sorry, this last paragraph, I should have mentioned this. So this is just referencing the, the, there's, there's a separate report that talks about the test work we do over compliance relating to the single audit procedures. This is referencing that, that opinion. The MDNA follows the opinion and I'm going to skip over that for now. I do encourage you to read it. It does contain comparative information. It describes changes and provides context. But I'm going to focus on the financial statements in a couple of footnotes. Year-over-year comparison, you know, you think things didn't dramatically change from one year to the next. You'll see that the unrestricted net position is in a good spot compared to the, the total expenditures year-over-year from both a government-wide standpoint and then also at the governmental fund standpoint. These government-wide statements, the statement of net position and statement of activities are the, the, the city as a whole. So it includes both the governmental activities and the business type activities. It's on the full accrual method of accounting and economic resources measurement focus. So it includes all assets and liabilities, both current and long-term. And all deferred inflows and deferred outflows of resources. You'll see why that's important when we get to the fund financial statements. The statement of activities presents the income statement of the city as a whole. It's organized between the program activities appear at the top and then any revenues associated with them that offset those expenses are presented up, up there as well. The general revenues, which are, you can think of those as kind of non-exchange transactions where you're providing, you're, you're getting revenue that aren't directly related to a service provided. So property taxes, specific ownership taxes, sales and use taxes are all down below. For governmental funds, where the intent isn't that the, the revenue generated would offset the expenses, those are primarily offset by those non-exchange or general revenues. You'll see that the business type activities are primarily funded through charges for services. Year-over-year, the governmental activities improved the net position by 9.4 million and the business type activities, which would be all of the enterprise funds improved net position by 6.1 million for a total of 15.6. The, the balance sheet, so now we're into the governmental fund financial statements. The balance sheet is the balance sheet of the governmental funds. Here we're focusing on major funds. So there's some quantitative thresholds that are, are met for the general fund and the capital improvements fund. All the other funds are aggregated into a, a separate schedule. Because they fall below that quantitative threshold. These are on the current financial resources measurement focus and modified accrual basis. So you won't see any capital assets or long-term debt. And some of the deferred inflows and deferred outflows are removed here as well. But just something I like to point out, the unassigned fund balance, which only appears in the general fund, is approximately a year's worth of total expenditures for the organization, which is a great position to be in for the organization or for the city. This is a reconciliation that goes from the governmental fund financial statement, fund balance to the government-wide statement of net position. Net position. So you'll see the, the governmental funds have a, a fund balance of just under 30 million dollars. And then when you add capital assets and deduct the, the related debt and pension, pension items. I'm sorry, the pension items and some minor debt, then you, you end up with the, the net position of 71 million. I'm sorry, the pension items and some minor debt, then you, you end up with the, the net position of 71 million. The statement of revenues, expense, expenditures and changes in fund balance, this is the income statement for the governmental funds. The general fund has about $11 million in expenditures and $22 million in total for all governmental funds. So that's where I was pointing out the, the unassigned fund balance exceeding the annual expenditures. The general fund decreased in, in fund balance by about a million dollars, mostly relating to the transfer to the capital improvement fund of about 4.5 million dollars. In total, the governmental funds improved the fund balance by about $770,000. And here again is a reconciliation that goes from the change in fund balance to the change in net position. The proprietary fund financial statements. So here's where you'll see the individual components or individual enterprise funds, and then you've got the, the internal service fund. I'm not going to spend a lot of time on this because this is also part of the, the statement of activities and, and the, the presentation of the, the measurement focus is the same, so there's no reconciliations between the statement of net position here or the front. But I will point out the statement of cash flow. So everything in those, in these statements is on the accrual basis. The statement of cash flows does show you sources and uses of cash organized between operating activities, non-capital financing activities, capital and related financing activities, and then investing activities. You, you always want to see positive cash flows from operating activities, which is the case for, for the, for the city. It's not a bad thing to see cash flows, negative cash flows from capital and related financing activities or investing activities because both of those are investments in the organization. And then the last couple of statements are the fiduciary funds, so I'm going to skip over those. They're fairly insignificant. Within the so I'll stop there. Are there any questions on the statements before I get into the footnotes?
Not at this point.
Okay. So I'd like to point out capital assets, so the, the, there's a capital asset roll forward that shows improvements made within each of those categories for the governmental activities and then also for the business-type activities. Here's where you can see the, the current year activity within the governmental capital assets, and then on the next page. You'll see the, the the roll forward of the capital asset activities for business-type activities. Just like to point that out so you can see kind of how those are organized. The governmental funds don't have any debt. They just have compensated absences. The business-type activities have some liabilities or, or long-term debt. This shows you the roll forward of those items during the year. You can see that two long-term liabilities were, were satisfied during the year. There's still the water revenue but refunding bonds outstanding. So I like to point out the future maturities of those. You can see how those are maturing over the next five years and then in five-year increments after that. We have a table that shows the pension accounts balances. So you have deferred outflows of resources, which are the best way to describe them are kind of like an asset, but not quite. And then deferred inflows of resources, which are kind of like a liability, but not quite. Basically, unearned revenues or expenses. And then the net pension liability you can see in total is about 15.7 million. I do, so the largest pension you have is the parapension, and so there's a sensitivity analysis in here for each of them. But you can see what the impact of a 1% increase or decrease in the discount rate would have on that liability. So you're at 13.1 million using the 7.5, 7.25% that, that was used to calculate the liability this year. If it goes to 8.25, the liability would reduce to 7.3 million. If the discount rate goes to 6.25 million, it goes up to 20 million dollars. So just the, the impact of that particular measurement or factor in the calculation of the liability, the impact that that has on the liability. And then the last thing that I was going to point out is the subsequent events disclosure, and I described this already, but you can see where we've got this fairly lengthy disclosure that talks about all of the uncertainties around COVID-19. And that's pretty much it. That's the extent of my presentation. So it sounded like there might be some questions, but I'll open it up now.
I may, before we're, we're finished with it, after I read it in its entirety and review the paperwork, but at this moment, I, I don't have any.
Okay.
Any else?
Um, I don't know if it's applicable or not. I've been trying to follow the new, the bills that have been kind of pushed in for this final session at this date. I know they've got about like two weeks left. Do you know if there's anything that would impact either potential funding that this city would get? Actually, it's not going to matter because that's 2019. So I'm just really worried about those bills. So.
Yeah, and we're, we're monitoring that. I don't, I don't know at this point. We, we, we try not to speculate until we kind of have more solid information, but we are, we're, we're monitoring all of the organizations that are producing information that would or could affect the, the city, and we'll share that out when we, when we know more.
Okay. Yeah, thanks for the great work, and this is one of my favorite presentations because I get to admire our finance department and how well they track and monitor and take care of our funds. So thanks, Jeannie.
Thank you. Well, thank you to Erin and Randy for all your hard work, and we really appreciate all your help, really kind of all year.
Any other questions from council for the auditors? Thank you, gentlemen.
Great. Yep, absolutely. We'll drop off. Have a great rest of your evening.
Nope.
Okay. Next is presentation for self-contained breathing apparatus bottles for the fire department. Mr. Bain.
Good evening, Mayor Council. How are we doing tonight?
Good, yourself?
Good. Okay, so well, what we've got to do is we've got to replace our bottles every 10 years, and we've got quite a few that are getting ready to go out. So we went out for bid on April 27th. The bid opening was held May 15th. And we had two bids come in, one from municipal emergency services out of Denver, which is $19,185. They did meet all our bid requirements, and we had another company out of Naperville, Illinois, and they did not meet our requirements. They were also over our budget of 26,000. That's Tazza Supplies, but they did not meet any of our requirements that required for, for our bottles. So tonight, we are requesting to replace 15 air, or 15 30-minute bottles, 12 SCBA masks, and we're going to get three masks that require the, the glasses for guys that can't wear contacts and they can see through their mask with the prescription glasses there. We are requesting approval for a bid of $19,185 through municipal emergency supply services.
Okay. Pretty standard. This is equipment we really can't scrimp on, so.
Yeah, in the next couple of years, we've got to replace quite a few, so this will actually get a big chunk of them gone, so which is good. I think we had 30 of them we've got to replace in the next four years, so.
Any questions for Trey?
None for me.
Right. Seeing none, I would entertain a resolution.
Your Honor, take it, Lynn. You've got it, girl.
Okay, I offer a resolution on bids for SCBA bottles for the fire department.
Second. I have a resolution by Lynn Deal and a second by Doug Sashow. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign?
That resolution carries unanimously.
Thanks, Greg.
Thank you, guys. We appreciate it.
You bet. Stay safe.
Will do.
Bye, Trey.
Next is a presentation on bids for roof replacement at the animal shelter. Commander Sharp.
Good evening. So in 2017, we had some wind damage to the animal shelter roof. Part of our agreement with the animal shelters, we do still maintain the building. I'm not sure what happened, but we got a bid back in late 2017, and it was too late for the budget in 2018, so it didn't make it in. So the roof has not been repaired for a little over a year now. If you drive by, you'll see some damage. It's been kind of patched, but the roof is about 18 years old, maybe a little older than that. So we're, we went out to bid on, on the roof for not only asphalt shingles, but also for metal roofing, to try to determine what's better. I'm recommending that we go with the company that's doing impact-resistant shingles. The bids were actually put out on April 21st and opened on May 22nd. Deadline was May 21st. And the lowest bid was actually for impact-resistant class four shingles of $9,857.41 from a company called Dynamic National out of Centennial. We had no local bidders at all. We had a total of I think five that met specifications in on time and another one that came in too late, so we didn't accept that bid. But we're recommending that we go with the impact-resistant class four shingles. And I'm asking that the council approve $11,000, even though I don't expect full $11,000 to be used. We, we may have some damage to the roof that we don't know about. So an amount to not exceed $11,000 would be the request.
Yeah, being damaged for that long, some of that underlayment could very well be warped, rotted, deteriorated or something, so.
Correct.
You had 17,000 budgeted for this, correct?
That, and that was on the metal roofing, if we went with the metal roofing. But looking at everything and the cost with the 50-year shingle, I believe the impact resistant is probably the better deal for us at this point.
Okay. Any questions for Commander Sharp?
No.
I'd entertain a resolution.
Your Honor, I'll resolution to accept the bid from Dynamic National, not to exceed a total cost of $11,000.
Okay. I have a resolution by Allison Howe, a second by Kevin Lindell. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign?
That resolution carries unanimously.
Thanks, Lauren.
Thank you.
Next is a presentation on bids for fieldhouse construction, special inspection services. Mr. Glenn Meyer.
All right, thank you all. Good evening. What you have before you in your packet tonight is a request to approve a bid and enter into contract with Professional Service Industries Incorporated. As you know, we're starting construction on the fieldhouse in just a couple of weeks, and one of the items that we need to make sure that that is successful are special inspection services. These are things that, you know, Mike Kirkendall can't do like soil compaction or concrete testing, asphalt compaction for the parking lot, welding inspection, anchor bolt testing and, and just other connector, steel bolt connectors for the metal building. This is a pretty complex project, and so staff sought bids from companies that can do all of that in-house. We got six bidders propose on the project. We were pretty excited about that. We looked through those bids in detail with our consultant, and we think Professional Service Industries is a good firm. They do this across the nation. They're actually pretty big. I've never worked with them, hadn't heard of them before, but they've got offices all over the nation. They were the low bidder, and I think they can perform this work well for us. Their bid was $22,608. We're going to ask for a little contingency on this in case we run into something. Maybe additional soils testing or something that may come up that we're not aware of. Well, under the budget, we're going to talk about that under staff reports here later, but I'm asking for authority to award the bid to Professional Service Industries for a not-to-exceed price of $35,000. I'd be happy to answer any questions. Have them.
Hey, Steve, just a quick education question for me so I can learn more about this specific service. So you'd mentioned it's just, it's the type of building we're constructing, it's specialized enough that we can't handle it internally?
There are just components that we can't do internally, like welding inspection. You know, Mike doesn't do that. Anchor bolts for the building of this size are just out of his scope as well. Connectors for all of these metal, you know, metal building requires all kinds of connectors to put it all together, and so he's not used to looking at those types of things. And then just all the outside stuff as well that he normally wouldn't look at, like asphalt and soils and that type of thing.
And the contract would be just the duration of the construction project?
Yeah, that's correct. This contract would go clear until May of 2021.
Hello. Um, that's it for me. Thanks, Steve.
Yeah, you're welcome.
How come such a large contingency request?
Yeah, it's just hard to know, Ron, specifically what we may get into. I just, you know, the soil is a big piece of this, removing four to five feet of clay out of there and having to test all that back in. I just want to make sure that we've got money in there to get all of that testing done properly, and if we run into a large lens of of clay that say goes down much deeper, we're going to require more testing at that point, and so just want to make sure that we've got it covered. I'd hate to have to come back. I mean, I can certainly do that. It just gives me the, the ability to to track that a little better. I'm going to do everything I can to make sure we're at, you know, the, the 20 $22,000, but.
I didn't think about the clay we had with the senior center over there with the soils, so. Yeah, that makes, that makes sense.
Yeah.
Okay. Any other questions for Steve? There aren't any. I would entertain a resolution.
Your Honor, I'll for a resolution to accept the bid from Professional Service Industries Incorporated not to exceed $35,000 and authorize the mayor to sign the agreement.
Who had that one?
Sasha.
I have a resolution by Allison Howe, a second by Doug Sashow. All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign?
That resolution carries unanimously.
Okay, next on our agenda is a presentation on bids for a lead commissioning authority services for the fieldhouse project. Mr. Glenn Meyer.
All right, well, this is another component of the fieldhouse construction. One of the requirements because of our grant funding is that this building is LEED certified, and we're looking to certify this as a silver. A lot of these things I don't particularly understand, but this is energy efficiency. It's components that you know, save us on the backend with utilities and those types of things. So we do have to hire a commissioning agent. This person specifically comes into the building and looks at all of the mechanical, electrical, plumbing, the things that can cost you money as you operate, and they make sure that first of all, everything that we ordered and installed meets the requirements that say it will meet and that it performs according to what it says it will, how it will perform. This is something very specialized and take, take somebody that's certified to do this. They'll actually give us an entire report at the end of the project as well as a set of operation and ownership manuals. They're also going to train all of our staff on how to operate the facility the most efficient way possible so that we meet those requirements going forward. And then they also come in at 10 months after operation and relook at everything and make sure there's nothing that's, that's not performing correctly or that may need warranty work, and they'll notify us of what those items are, and then we can bring the contractor back in before the warranty expires after, you know, at the 12-month period. So all of that's covered. This is a multi-year contract. They'll start looking at things probably late this year as far as construction. And then again, early next year as we start everything up and start operating the building in, in May and June. And again, they're back in 10 months, which could put us into 2022, the very early months of 2022. So multi-year. Again, we, we advertised this, and I was surprised to get eight bidders on this project from all over the all over the nation again, but Edison Energy is a company that our consultants have worked with. And so we were pretty comfortable having them perform this work for us. We actually had their, their staff that they have in Florida, they, they have lead abilities and they actually reviewed all the proposals with them. They, they feel very comfortable with the proposal that Edison has given us to do this work. Their bid was at 31,360. Again, just asking for a little bit of contingency in case we run into something. I don't think we will. But I always like to just have a little room in case something comes up. Certainly, again, keep you apprised if anything does. But asking for acceptance of the bid from Edison Energy to perform this lead commissioning authority services for us for an amount not to exceed $40,000. And happy to answer any questions.
This lead requirement or contingency was part of our grant funding as well. So that was, it was a requirement that was placed in the grant funding that we got. Are there any other questions for Steve?
Um, for city staff who've been here longer than Steve, have, do we have other buildings that have gone through the lead process or is this kind of the first one?
This, this would be the first one. Our, our newest building that we have, to be honest, Allison, is 20 years old.
I think that's like pre-lead, so.
Predates, yeah, most of us in this conversation, but it's, yeah, it, they, they probably had lead back then, but it was the water treatment plant. So I'm sure it wasn't certified.
Okay, thanks Brett.
Okay, any other questions? I would entertain a resolution.
Your Honor, I offer a resolution to accept the bid from Edison Energy for our lead commissioning authority services. For our Fieldhouse project and authorize you, Mayor, to sign an agreement not to exceed $40,000.
I have a resolution by Allison Howe and a second by Kevin Lindell. All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign.
That resolution carries unanimously.
Thank you all very much.
The 2021 Budget Calendar. Presentation of self-insurance funds, liability risks and costs. Ms. Kirk.
Evening. Can you all hear me? Pretty low?
Little low.
Let me try it without this. Can you hear me now?
About the same.
Okay, I'll just get super close. Okay, um, so as part of the budget, self-funded self-insurance is always the first one to go. So we're going to discuss the 038 line in our budget. And that refers to self-funded or self-insurance. And it's the plan design and the method, method of risk sharing that the city has chosen to provide group insurance coverage for our employees. So under this model, our city is responsible for paying all the claims and losses up to a certain level. And as part of this structure, we contract with a broker. That's Hub, who helps the city design the plan, negotiates discounts, keeps an eye on our claims for us, contracts with other insurance companies for our networks like Cigna and Delta and Discovery Benefits. Hub also contracts with our third-party administrator, Lucent, which is the group that pays our claims for us. So we offer three plans to our employees and their families along the lines of two HDHP, which are high deductible health plans. And we offer one PPO plan. One of the high deductible plans is free and the other two have a premium cost that is taken out on a pre-tax deduction from our employees. So when we talk about how the plans are running, this is basically a report to give you a snapshot in time. To give counsel an idea of how the plan is running for 2021 and kind of look back to 2020, 2019 and what our plan utilization was. So utilization is the number of paid claims as a measurement of how the insurance program is being utilized by the employees. And we also look at both overall utilization of the plan and individual plan utilization numbers. Meaning we look at each one of the high deductible plans and PPO plans to see how employees are using the plans. So in 2019, our plan utilization was high. Meaning that the city incurred a high cost for claims. That hasn't always been the case in the past. In the past, we have had lower utilization, thereby some of the funds stayed in the account. But several claims went into stop-loss territory, which stop-loss is a insurance plan that covers things that go over $85,000. And we went into that territory quite a bit in 2019, which caused the plan to exceed the budget by $398,510. But I just want to let you know that, you know, one bad year does not determine the sustainability of the entire plan. This is a long-term look. And it's important to look at the data as to why there was a bad year. This last year, we had, like I said, some very high claims costs. We had some very high and long hospital stays. We also had some increases in prescription costs. So those are some of the things that were contributing to 2019. But I wanted to also, again, remind you, this is a snapshot in time. So that $398,000 number could change throughout the year because we are receiving stop-loss payments back from our stop-loss carrier, which will offset that somewhat. So several things are happening in 2020, looking forward, that are going to affect our numbers in 2021. And basically that includes COVID. Employees have not been able to use their insurance for routine items this year so far. They've been, you know, had to put off elective surgeries because hospitals were not doing them. So claims may go up towards the end of the year. It may be expected to do that. We also got rid of a PPO high plan last year. And we have what's called a, a runout of claims. So we should start to see lower claims due to the shift to the additional high deductible plan that we offered and added in 2020. So I'm assuming that the runout on that will be significant. We, like I said, we had some very large claims in 2019 that affected our, our insurance. Just to let you know, several of the people and the claims who hit this level are no longer with the city. And these claims will not repeat or continue. So they will drop off. So that will be something to look forward to. We are also budgeting to cover the new employee positions that were approved in 2020, raising our employee count to 172. We're not at the moment hiring some of these physicians because of COVID-19, but there, there is some savings there right now. We're not looking to change our plans offered in 2021 at this point. Staff may ask for approval of an onsite employee health clinic in 2021, 2021 to dovetail with our health and wellness plans. That's to be determined still. And Hub has predicted that the most the city might see as an increase to our plan in 2021 is a hike of 12.5%. But again, this is a snapshot in time. It's, it's too early to tell how this year is going to go. Better numbers will be available in August, September timeframe, in time for the budget. And also our property and casualty and workers comp numbers will be given to the city in August and September after our renewal and will be available during the budget review process then. So, any questions?
These are just preliminary numbers and foresight for later on in the year.
They are. Um, they're good through the end of April. That's, yeah.
Does anybody else have any questions for Susan?
Has, has there been any employees that has COVID? I think so, huh?
Yes.
Oh, okay.
And there have been some close calls as well, you know, so people have been tested and they've come back negative. So.
Brett was one of those.
Yes, I was. Not a fun test to take.
I've seen what they do and it does not look fun.
I was extremely happy just to have had strep.
Glad you didn't have that, anything else.
You know, we call it the brain brush.
What is it? I, I don't know anything about that. What is it?
It's about a two-foot-long cotton swab. They stick it all the way as far up in your nose as they can.
Yeah, it's called nasopharyngeal. So yeah, as far back as you can go.
I hate needles and you'll have to do a blood test on me.
Was it like a Q-tip or is it, it's not immune?
It's just a big swab. It just is very uncomfortable, very uncomfortable. Anyhow, thank you, Susan.
Yeah, Susan, it's great work. And thanks for explaining us, explain to us, look at long-term for our self-insurance fund.
All right. That public comment or audience participation for items not on the agenda.
Your Honor, we do have a couple of attendees. If anybody would like to speak, if you could put a note in the chat box at the bottom and we can try and get your microphone turned on if you do want to make a comment. Seeing none?
Ron, I have, I had a phone call this afternoon. Guy wanting to know when we're going to get the library open.
About time, because you called me too.
Oh, did he? Okay. Maybe we could address that or something.
Yeah, I think we'll, we'll kind of question that or maybe you guys can touch on that possibly on our next one. So officials and staff.
I had something.
Yes, ma'am.
Well, Randy emailed me after he finished his presentation and the, the audit was being reviewed and the other auditor felt that the $4.5 million that we show as a transfer from the general fund to the capital fund should be considered an expense in the fund, which would make us over by almost that amount for the, the budget. So I may bring you a budget, I mean, an ordinance that has a change it next time. We've done that before. I believe we did it with the, with the street once. We waited until, and so we can still have that be final, right, John? Can we?
Yeah, we can amend it on second reading.
Okay. But I just wanted to bring it up since I know, you know, so it won't be quite such a big shock.
We'll see how big a shock it is.
The 4.5 million.
That's on top of the two six?
Yes. Because they showed it as a transfer out of the general fund. If you look at, I don't know if you guys have your, you probably don't have yours handy like I do because they're on a screen, but if you look at page 64, it shows the 4.5 million that has been taken out. And that was not considered in coming up with the budget ordinance because it was treated as a transfer out, but apparently they're, they're wanting to treat it as an actual expense.
Page is that on? I'm going to review it when we're done.
Okay.
Page 64. Yeah. And then if you actually look at the, the capital fund, it's page 65, you can see it being added in as a transfer in on that one. So we were just moving cash because capital didn't have enough and general had more. So that's what that what, that is what caused it.
All right.
Wilson, Wilson's staff had reported Susan.
I do. I wanted to give counsel an update on the city manager recruitment. We had a total of 30 applications and on preliminary review, 19 met the minimum and preferred qualifications. Six were questionable, five were not qualified. Lauren and Sam Emmett, the members of the KRW team will be, they have reviewed the application materials in more detail and they have presented a tiered list of the candidates with their recommendations forward. So I will be forwarding a zip file to the council members with all the candidate application materials for your review. And then I was wondering if we needed to set an executive session up for next meeting or if you wanted to do a work session or if you wanted to do it via email, but the next step is that we should arrange a telephone conversation with Lauren and Sammatt to discuss the next steps and, and get your preliminary feedback of who you would like to move forward with.
When are we going to get the zip files with the applicants?
Tomorrow.
Okay. Well, we can either do an executive session to discuss it or we can do a work session if we want to do it before the next council meeting. Thoughts? Like we've been putzing around with this long enough. I just soon enough put it off for another two weeks, make it go that much further.
Do a work session?
Yep.
I could do like a long lunch if you guys are cool with doing it in the middle of the day. I think, I don't know what Clint's schedule looks like right now or Doug. Kevin, you're mostly retired. I think Lynn's mostly retired. So I think daytime might be good for that. But I could make it work if I've got, if I can use my lunch hour.
Take your lunch hour at six?
Well, if we wanted to do, yeah, want to move it up.
Anytime for me, I don't know.
Would this be via Zoom or would we look at doing something in person since?
Yeah, can we? Do Zoom. I think Nelson could set that up. I mean, I, I would like a couple of days to review the
Me too.
Applications at, at a bare minimum.
Oh, I concur.
So.
What about Susan? Could we do it next week?
Yeah, we can do it anytime you guys want to. You want to do it Monday? Tuesday?
Well, let me kind of look at the calendar and see what's.
Yeah, I, I would suggest you send out an email to let people give a chance, look at their calendars and then we can try and pick a night or time then.
Yep, I agree. So we'll need a, a couple of different days to kind of see what works best for the majorities and give us a, a few, at least two, three days minimum to review the applications and that if we got 19 of them, so.
Are we still, we're still set on the six o'clock slot though, right? Everyone's good with that? Are we still, we're still set on the six o'clock time slot though, right? Everyone's good with that?
I'm fine with it.
Yeah, I don't care. Anytime, I can do it anytime.
I'll make it work with.
Yeah, me too.
Whatever the majority can, can make, so.
Me too.
It's that way, you can just figure out a date.
Yeah.
So that will have to be a publicly noticed meeting.
Correct.
So whenever you know, let me know.
Okay.
We have to do this Zoom. I can't really like meet since we're under ten.
That's what I was.
Well, we probably still have to have a phone connection with Lauren and Sam.
Right.
Yeah, let's figure some dates and then we can work out the details on that. So we've got a couple of days if we can get those applications and we can have some time to review them and during that review period, we can figure out what's going to work for all of us.
Okay, thank you very much.
And you, John, you need forty-eight hours? Twenty-four?
Yeah.
All right, we'll give you forty-eight.
Okay, that'd be great.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Susan. Sarah, or Steve?
Yeah. Yeah, so I included in the packet tonight just a breakdown of Fieldhouse budget. I just want to keep you guys on top of this as we get deeper into the project. I know there've been a lot of questions about what are we spending and, and, you know, are we on budget or are we under budget and so I included a lot of detail there. You know, I don't need to spend a lot of time on that tonight, but I think suffice it to say that even some of the items we talked about tonight are in that spreadsheet. And you can see that we've got a fair contingencies project, eight hundred and twenty thousand plus or minus to keep us at ten million dollars. That includes a pretty good fixtures, furnishings and equipment budget. I've been working with Ty and Steve Sampson and they, they feel like they're in the three hundred thousand dollar range. So I think you can see the components there. GH FIPS is required to stay at eight point seven, three, six, eight, nine, four. Unless we add elements to the project, that would be like additional paved parking or add on to the building or something of that nature, then they could go above that number, but for the project that we have designed, they have to stay point seven million dollars. They can't go above that. Anything they go above that, they eat. So I think that's good, but we also have our contingency in there in case we have something that comes up that we need to take care of. So I'm going to get in front of you. I'm going to keep updating this as we go forward on the project, but thought it'd be good to get it in your hands to, to start. And if you get questions, that hopefully this will help you be able to answer those and all, as always, you can call me or reach out to me and I'm happy to meet with you or, or go over it in detail, so.
Steve, are you going to have somebody photograph all the process?
Yeah, in fact, I was telling Brent today, the contractor is actually going to set up a, a camera little time lapse. So we should have a pretty neat little time lapse video when this project's all finished. Now, this is a ten month construction period, so it'll be quite the video, but I think that'll be interesting to see and then I'll have a ton of photos and I think there'll be a lot of people taking pictures, but yeah, we'll have a lot of pictures, so.
Yeah, was that done for the senior center also? The senior?
No, they didn't set up a time lapse. Those things can be a little.
Just pictures, maybe.
We have quite a few pictures of the process. Pretty much every time I was over there, I would take pictures. I would just have to dig them out of the cloud.
Because we, at the museum, those are, those are nice to have. I wish we had some pictures of some buildings, you know, back, but that's, it's always nice to have a little archive of some of the public buildings.
Yeah.
Especially the ones that are public, you know, like the Fieldhouse and things.
All right, that's all I had. Thank you.
Well, I think you guys have done a stellar job on trying to keep things under the ten million and my hat's off to you. I think you guys did a stellar job doing it. So kudos to Brent, Steve, staff, everybody involved.
Now to get it built.
Now to get it built, no.
Well, that's a good segue into say you all should have received an email today as an invite to the, either the in-person or the virtual groundbreaking ceremony that we're going to have on June eleventh. That's next Thursday. Still limited to ten people in public, so I had to, I had to pick and choose a little and so if, if you didn't get an invite to the in-person, please join us on, on the live stream. If something breaks and we can have you all attend in person, we'll sure do that, but we're pretty excited to finally get this project kicked off and started, so.
We can protest and I'll go over it once.
That's what I'm saying.
I actually said that once today.
Hey, and thanks to our police department. We're very proud of you all and like our little town that's safe and feels great. Not to have all that stuff.
Doesn't mean we're exempt from it.
Well, I know, but for the most part, it's pretty nice.
Yeah.
Mr. Mayor, I can address the library. Try to. There has been no new guidelines for libraries and museums in this recent update. Right now they're updating pools, outdoor recreation, youth sports, that kind of thing, so there is a lot of good news on that. The last order on May twenty-sixth actually still said that libraries remain closed. So Chandra was getting ready to try to open by appointment only for the library and then kind of paused it at that time. She still wants to and is ready to and has a plan. We're just kind of waiting for some more guidance. I know the Brush Library is trying to do some more than they have been, so we're kind of keeping an eye on what they're doing as well. But we're trying as far as the library museum. As far as the pools, we're going to we're in the process of hiring lifeguards and hopefully opening for lap swimming on June fifteenth, the week of June fifteenth. We're going to go with lap swimming for just about a week. And then on the week of June twenty-second, I believe it is, we're going to hopefully have the middle pool ready and be able to do some open swims for families and so forth. It won't be the pool that everybody remembers. It'll be limited to fifty people tops when we have open swims. So it'll be by appointment only. We'll have different sessions that people will sign up for in advance. We're going to try to open the Armory next week. So we'll open the weight room and the cardio room next week at the Armory. Keep the basketball court closed for now because basketball is a high contact sport and kind of hard to social distance while you're playing basketball, but we're gearing up, bringing a few seasonals and part timers back on board and trying to get those going in the next couple of weeks. I'll try to find out more about the library. Chander and I were just talking about it earlier this evening via email and text. And I'll try to find out more tomorrow from her, see if she's anything, heard anything from the, you know, world of library or librarians, however you want to say that, and hopefully give you an update on that soon as well.
Hey, I'm Ty, the gentleman who called Doug and Ron and myself. He also asked about the senior center opening. Did he ask you guys about that, Ron and Doug?
Yes, he did.
You see anything?
So.
Our deadline, our dates?
No. We're going to be transitioning the Meals on Wheels group on Friday. We have our inspection with the health department for the kitchen on Thursday, and once we get that done, the Meals for Wheels will start operating out of the new senior center on Friday. My my guess is, senior center, public building like that will probably be one of the last things to open for public access just because it's a high risk population. I have learned a little bit just watching Governor Polis today, you know, that if there is easy ways to contract, contract, contact trace cases, that's the kind of things they're kind of being more lenient with. That's why youth sports are starting to allow, be allowed is because they'll have registration names of everybody and if someone does it, get sick, they'll be able to trace that back. So hopefully, senior center might be similar. But I think public gatherings and that kind of thing are still a ways away, if you ask me.
Well, I think there's a, there's a solution for all of this for the library and the senior center. We put a Walmart site at the library and a Lowe's at the senior center and we're exempt. We can go do as we please.
It is interesting how the rules are not apples to apples based on what type of facility, for sure.
I agree. It makes no sense to me whatsoever.
It is changing, like when they changed the retail sales rule, that did help at the golf course with some things. We were able, you know, to open up the merchandise and use cash and some different things like that. So every little bit kind of influenced the other thing. I think we're just waiting for, you know, these what do you want to call them, adjustments to the safer at home order? And hopefully they'll start coming faster and faster as the numbers still look good for Colorado, so.
I'm just quick update. So everything that's about public and private libraries, Ty is in appendix A of the, so today was like the fifth amendment for the safer at home. So curbside is still like a go.
That's what we're doing.
Yeah, so everything you guys are doing is, is good, so.
Yeah, appendix A of that May twenty-sixth order, right? Is where they address the libraries, I think.
And if we want to stand COVID conversation, Morgan County commissioners are working on a variance request, so if there were specific facilities that the city wanted to toss in that variance request, you need to join that conversation pretty fast.
Okay, I know Chander mentioned, mentioned the Brush Library was trying to get on, on that. I guess I would assume if it's a county wide variance, wouldn't that apply to all the libraries? I don't know. But we'll try to, we'll try to figure that out tomorrow.
We just need to have a really, I've read like all of the variance requests and all of the like reports back from the state for all of our six county health district, well, for the four that submitted, so. Unfortunately, I'm well versed on how specific our plans need to be. So if we've got East Morgan County library, excuse me, they've got a really exceptional director who I know works with Chandra, so if they wanted to just share the same policies, that would probably save time. If we wanted to try something with the senior center, Ron, we'd need like a sign in sheet. There'd be, like, I think we could figure something out, but it would just need to be pretty cautious.
I think Chander's got some pretty good plans and I know she's been talking with those with the district there in Brush, so she may have something pretty close to ready, you know, already. The senior center, we could try to work on something. Yeah, I don't know.
And I'm, I am hesitant on the senior center just because anyone over sixty-five is high risk and anyone who has an underlying condition and high risk with age, it's very, very scary. So I just, I wouldn't recommend it just because of the high risk for landing someone in the hospital or worse.
The county's variance carry more weight if we attach, like, anything came from the city with it as well? I mean, it sounds like Brush is attaching stuff to it, which shouldn't we attach some things to it as well?
I guess I'd have Ron reach out to the commissioners and kind of see where they're at.
I'll add something really quickly. I sit on those calls that they're having regarding the county and looking for a variance, so I can work with the departments here at the city and see which buildings we would want to submit a variance for. And then from there, move it forward so that they have it in their pocket if that's what we want to do.
So the most challenging part about the variance request is tossing in kind of your, your pinch points or your snapback, so like if we have a certain surge of cases that we revert back to pre-variance days, so I know Yuma's going through that right now and it's been pretty painful because they received a variance request and then they had a huge spike in cases, so just to be mindful of that when we think through kind of that snapback idea. So, cool. Thanks, Sarah.
Would that include the city hall building maybe? I, I, I don't know what you, I don't know what kind of buildings you would include.
I would assume Lynn, whatever, whatever we're pushing to open for, if it's not already part of the state, you know, public health order, we would have to apply for a variance. So we need to create a plan. How are we going to keep people six feet apart? Are we going to require masks? How are we going to disinfect? You have to use an approved disinfectant that's approved by the EPA and you know, there I guess, I, today was the first I had heard that the commissioners were trying to go for the variance again. Couple, what, two or three weeks ago, Sarah, that one call I sat in on, it sounded like the health department can kind of shot them down and said we were nowhere near getting a county, you know, variance. So I think we just need to make some calls tomorrow and find out, you know, where, where are they really at on this and when are they planning on submitting it? Can we add some buildings? You know, I think we could probably come up with a plan for city hall pretty easy.
Look, once every two weeks, that wouldn't be.
I think the senior center would be the, the tough one to just really ensure that those people are safe. Few times I've been over there with some seniors, you know, they show up in a mask and then the mask is off five minutes later, so I don't know how you could control it, but.
Yeah, unfortunately, it's a respiratory disease, so that's, yeah, talking, singing, making out, you know, all that's kind of connected, so.
Making out.
Making out. That's our joke all the time is, yeah, don't make out with strangers. That's our, our talking point all the time. And so I'll toss this in the chat box, but we've released tonight a new county specific page for data on, on our website, so I'll throw that in. We worked really hard to try to show a lot of different visualizations of not just cumulative but assumed recovered and active cases, so that should be pretty helpful as whoever's working on this variance request can see trends and also see, yeah, that assumed recovery curve as well.
Yeah, I saw what it looked like. A lot of new graphs the other, the other night, Allison, on that link.
So I'll send, yeah, the one that's specific for Morgan County. Super interesting and you can see, I should just screen share. Do you guys want to see it?
No.
Okay. No? I like, I love data and I love numbers and it's been a really fun project. So I'll just, I'll just put the link in the chat and you guys can dive in, so. It's going to be a long summer. It's going to be a long year. We're hiring more contact tracers, so, which yeah, it's just a really critical part of trying to, once we get those positive cases, people know right away if they're exposed or not, so we can just reduce the burden of disease, but also reduce the burden on our hospital and clinic systems.
Thank you, Allison.
Yeah, thanks a lot.
What the city's doing right now is continuing to assist our business community. So back in April, council, you guys passed the business grant, which was a huge success for our small business community here in Fort Morgan. So for this month, based on the new guidelines that the governor has put out, along with the health department, outside, I have to give some props to John. He came up with that line. He's super creative, so. We started the Take It Outside Business Assistance Program and what that entails is that we are waiving the fee, the city permit fee for the right of way. So this allows businesses and restaurants to extend out onto our sidewalk, still following all of the codes behind the right of way permit, but the fee itself is waived. Another part of the Take It Outside campaign is that we are also lending the city owned picnic tables and we are waiving the rental. and we are waiving the rental and security deposit fees. And this is again to just assist our restaurants specifically, so that they can provide outdoor seating to their patrons. So those are the two things that we're doing, and we have a campaign all around it. All the information and the permit applications can be found on the COVID-19 Business Resource page that is on the city website under Economic Development and Marketing. So if you have businesses that reach out to you and just don't, don't know where to go to find a platform to get all their information, we update that, we update that page as information becomes available. On top of that, we have partnered with the city of Brush. We partnered with them beginning in May to pull together funding to begin radio ads. And so for April and May, we focused on the Eat Out at Home campaign. And so beginning this month in June, we have transitioned that to instead this idea of reopen safe, reopen strong. And so we encourage businesses, businesses to open up safely, and we encourage people in our community to go out to those businesses, be safe, maintain social distancing standards, but also make sure to patronize our local business community. On top of that, I also want to congratulate the Stinker Store gas station, which is on Main and Platt. They reopened this week after redeveloping and putting in a brand-new store. It looks super awesome. And I want to give a quick shout-out to our Planning and Zoning and Building Department. When I reached out to the Stinker Store to ask them how they were doing, if the city could assist them in any way, they gave nothing but praise for those two departments and mentioned how great it was to work with staff there and how easy they made the process. So I just want to thank those two departments. They make it, they make my job a lot easier when it comes to working with businesses. So thank you, Steve, and everyone that works there in your department. Outside of that, I don't have any other updates.
Sarah, where, where are they from? Where, where, where's the headquarters of that? Because they're used, I, I used to see a lot of those in Idaho, Stinker Stations.
Yeah, they're, I mean, I don't know exactly where the Stinker Store headquarters are at, but one of their branches, one of their stores is here in Fort Morgan.
Locally owned? I have a lot of, is it, is there, is it a chain? Is it a franchise? What is, what is it exactly?
It's a franchise, but there, it's like the person who manages this store specifically is sort of like a regional manager of different types of stores. But I don't have the specifics on who exactly, like, the specifics of that business, of that company, I would say.
Is the manager, does he live here in Fort Morgan?
I don't know. I didn't ask.
I don't, I don't believe he does, Lynn. In our meetings before, he was talking about his Denver, his Denver stations that he had. So I don't think he's from here.
Is it the same at the Sabal Matt, or did they sell that property?
It's the, it's the same people. They just never fully switched over to their Stinkers brand name that they had.
Okay.
Yeah, and, and that manager is from the Front Range. She's got several stores down there and this one up here, so.
Great improvement. That place was bad. It was very popular, though. Everybody got gas there, but it would, it looked bad, but it looks beautiful now.
Hi, I do have something as well, Mayor, if I have a chance.
You're more than welcome, Lauren.
Talking to Chief Crone and I, to Chief Crone today, we kind of feel like it's important for the Police Department to put out a statement with everything going on around, kind of let everybody in the community know where we stand. So unfortunately, he wasn't able to make it. So he asked me to speak on behalf of the department. So I wrote a statement that I like to kind of read, make sure we get everything covered in there. "In light of recent events throughout the United States, we want to thank our citizens for their support. We strive to treat everyone with respect and appreciate the strong relationships we have developed with this community. We hold our, our officers and our community members to high standards in order to preserve the peace for all citizens of Fort Morgan. Recently, we, we have been asked by several groups to speak with them about events happening around the country. We are happy to have the chance to have an open dialogue with anyone. As we know now more than ever, we need to be working together with each member of our city to ensure that all members are represented and can feel safe. We value the relationships we have with our citizens, business owners, and civic organizations, and know that by working together, we can prevent violence and distrust between law enforcement and the community in which we proudly serve. We are asking that the members of our community unite and work with us to strengthen our community and protect it from such hatred that has been seen all around us. We are a very diverse, yet equally united, community, and we welcome any open dialogue to make our partnership even stronger. We invite all members of the community to reach out to us and discuss any concerns they may have. By working together, we can all be respected and remain a safe place to work, live, and raise our families." So that's kind of where we stand as a Police Department. If you guys have any questions about our perspective, feel free to ask.
Great, sounds wonderful.
Hey, Lauren.
Yes.
I'm, I'm wondering if you could add something like a specific practice or policy that the department has to ensure accountability for your department?
Okay, I can try to.
Like, I know we, we've got cams, you know, things like that, just to show that.
So, yeah, our body cameras footage, we can talk about the body camera footage, and then our policy is up online for anybody to see as well. The anti-bias training, some of the things we do, to ensure that, we can certainly include that.
Even as just, yeah, a short list. And, and it's, it is general about the community and diverse community. Is, is the Police Department okay with listing specifically African-American and Black residents as far as?
You know, we talked about that specifically, but I think we would prefer to just say all residents. It's inclusive of all. We want to be inclusive of everybody. Race, gender, sexual preference, we don't care. We want to be all-inclusive and not try to lump groups or make people fit into certain categories.
I agree.
Very good.
I definitely respect that. I don't think that all people are scared right now. And so I don't think it's, it's not politically incorrect or, yeah, to just make sure that the community that doesn't feel heard is still not really heard in the statement if they're not identified.
And, and we've been working with people. I'm not sure if we have people specifically in our community that don't feel like they've been heard. We've tried, we've asked, you know, there's a couple people that they wanted to talk to us. We're not really sure what anybody's concerns are. The group that we have, the groups that we have spoken with, I don't think their concerns are with us, per se, with the police. They're more in general with some of the potential riots that have gone on, some of those issues. And we don't really know how to adequately address them unless we know what that dialogue is. So we're trying to develop that dialogue and figure out how to adequately address those issues and not be addressing issues that we don't really know exist.
So the goal, so the goal of the statement is just protect the Police Department that they are doing their best to treat every resident with respect and to de-escalate. Is that kind of general purpose?
We are united as a group and that we have an open dialogue. We're asking anybody that has any concerns to talk to us so we can address those concerns and make sure that we're able to work together to, to make sure that whatever their concerns are alleviated.
Cool. Yeah, I can definitely throw a support, lots of support behind the statement.
Yeah, me too.
Well, I appreciate the fact that you are all, our entire community.
Yes.
That's what you are, are here to protect and serve. And I think you guys do a, an outstanding job. I know I talked to Jared today, and he's reached out or made some efforts for what Allison is talking about. So I appreciate the statement that you, you've made and.
And Allison, we are working specifically with groups that have reached out to us to try to address those issues that, but we don't know what they are hit. We're, we're in contact with them, trying to say what are their concerns so that we can have an open dialogue and try to, try to alleviate that.
Thanks.
Lauren, whenever you feel it's appropriate, if you want to send me that statement and whatever additions you might make based on Allison's comments, I can put it on our website, social media, and kind of get.
We talked about sending that out probably first thing in the morning. Okay.
Great, thank you. Thanks, Lauren.
Uh-huh, that's great.
Okay. Anyone else? Clint, do you have anything to add? Okay. Bids, meetings, and announcements, Mr. Brennan.
Thank you, Your Honor. We've got two bids out, accepting sealed bids for trail construction at Twaymore Farms until 3:00 PM on June 25th. And Fort Morgan Fieldhouse audio, video equipment and installation until 3:00 PM on July 2nd. The, under meetings, the Planning Commission is scheduled to meet on Monday, the 8th at 4:30 PM here at City Hall. That will actually be an in-person meeting. The Airport Advisory Board is scheduled to meet on the 9th at noon as an online virtual meeting. And the rest of the, the meetings on the schedule are still kind of up in the air. And I, the only other announcement I had was about the groundbreaking for the Field House on June 11th. And I think Steve kind of covered that. If you can't make it in person, watch it on V106 Radio Facebook page.
Anything else to come before Council?
Hey, Ron, I had one call about the timeline for both city manager position and for police chief position, and we've talked a lot about city manager. Do we have any updates on our timeline for the other one?
Yeah, we are going to discuss and look at utilizing the firm that we are using for the city manager, since they have Lauren and some other candidates that are part of that company, are retired law enforcement. I had talked with Lauren, and he has a, an interest in it and will give us a proposal on doing the Chief of Police advertising as opposed to going out for a complete new RFQ. I think that's something that we need to put on and, and discuss and move forward with that so that we can get that. This COVID has kind of put everything in a tailspin. I know that talking with Lauren, it was kind of tough with him getting in there. But yeah, that's where, where we're at, and I appreciate you bringing that up, so.
Mayor, you might want to clarify which Lauren you're talking about there. You're talking about Lauren with KRW, right?
Oh, yeah, I guess. Sorry, Lauren Sharp. Yes, you, you're right. Thanks, John. I just assumed everybody knowing, you knows what happens when we assume.
Well, I knew you weren't talking about me, so.
Okay, so. All right. Anything else? Clint, last time. Okay, with that, this meeting is adjourned.
Bye, you guys.
Stay safe. See you.